Good evening. Welcome to the Tuesday, May 12th, 2020, meeting of the Ashland Zoning Board of Appeals. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast by WACA. The town of Ashland, in response to the COVID-19 coronavirus, is currently following the guidance from the Ashton Board of Health, Massachusetts Department of Public Health, and the CDC regarding the virus and steps communities can take to prevent the spread. And all town facilities are currently closed to the public. In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 20, all public meetings are being conducted remotely. The following information is also provided for members of the public that would like to participate in the meeting remotely. And to participate remotely from a complete computer, please use the link which is included in the agenda, which is on our website. Or you may also telephone in. The telephone number, meeting ID, and password is also listed in the agenda. If you have not registered with Zoom, you will be asked for your name and an email address. And no participant ID is needed. First order of business will be to call the meeting to order. I think it's appropriate that we identify who's present. So I will start by name and position. And then I would ask the other members of the ZVA to respond. And then, excuse me, anyone else that is in the meeting. I'm John Trefethan. I'm the chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
I'm Stuart Segal, member of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Hi, Brian Forstall, member of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Okay, and I think for the moment, that's all that we need to identify. The first item on the agenda this evening is a variance public hearing for 10 Cedar Hill Road. I will read the notice that was published in the Metro West Daily News. The Ashland Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, May 12th, 2020 at 7:00 PM via a Zoom video conference meeting, accessed via the link to hear the petition of Michael and Catherine Koch of Ashland, Massachusetts, requesting a variance per Chapter 40A, Section 10 of the Massachusetts zoning act, and Chapter 282, Sections 3.3, parentheses, non-conforming uses in structures, close parenthesis, and 9.2, parentheses, Board of Appeals, close parenthesis, of the Ashland bylaws to allow for the construction of an addition that would encroach within the required 40-foot front setback. The property in question is located at 10 Cedar Hill Road, Assessors Map 08, Lot 113, in the residential A zoning district. Parties wishing to be heard on this matter should appear at the time and place indicated above. And materials may be viewed at a link to our website. And for more information or to submit comments, please contact Emma Snellings at phone number and address, email address. And that was signed by John Trefethan, Chairman, Ashland Zoning Board of Appeals. I think it might be helpful at this point, just so that everybody is aware of what we will be deciding tonight. To just read a couple of portions of the Ashland zoning bylaws, and also Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 10, having to do with variances. The property in question is a non-conforming structure. And Section 3.3.3 of Chapter 282 of the Ashland bylaws provides that the Board of Appeals may award a special permit to reconstruct, extend, alter, or change a non-conforming structure in accordance with this section only if it determines that such reconstruction, extension, alteration, or change shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming structure to the neighborhood, and that the following types of changes to non-conforming structures may be considered by the Board of Appeals. In subpar paragraph, capital A, provides reconstructed, extended, or structurally changed. Section 3.3.4 of the bylaws is variance required. And it says, except is provided in subsection 3.3.5, which is not applicable. The reconstruction, extension, or structural change of a non-conforming structure in such a manner as to increase an existing nonconformity or create a new nonconformity shall require a variance, provided, however, that the extension of an exterior wall add or along the same non-conforming distance within a required yard shall require the issuance of a special permit from the Board of Appeals. All that comes with under the Massachusetts general law, Chapter 40A, Section 10, having to do with variances. And I will not read the entire statute, but it provides that the Zoning Board of Appeals, in this instance, may issue a variance where we specifically find that owing to circumstances relating to the soil conditions, shape, or topography of such land or structures, and especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located, a literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance or bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner or repellent, and that desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of such ordinance or bylaw. So that is what the legal issues that the board has to consider in dealing with the application that is here before us. The way that we will proceed is that I will, we will turn it over to the applicant to make his presentation. The board will then have an opportunity to ask questions of the applicant. And then we will open the meeting for a public comment. So up until that time, I would ask any members of the public to withhold comment until we open the hearing up for public comment. All of that being said, I am now going to stop talking and turn the matter over to the applicants, Michael and Catherine Koch. If you would kindly introduce yourself and begin your presentation.
Thank you, John. So my name is Mike Koch. This is my wife, Katie, on Cedar Hill Road. And, you know, we have applied for the variance. I also just wanted to introduce Don Camini, who is the architect. He's just gonna help us. He's a little more experienced in these issues and can hopefully help answer any questions. He did some work on our house prior, I guess, by renovation. So he's familiar with the property and with us. And that being said, to the point, we would like to expand our house. And I think the trick is being on a corner lot. From what I understand, we are kind of subjected to frontal distances. And just with the landscape, we're just trying to make our house a little bit more functional, you know, internally. But most importantly, you know, stay within the scope of the neighborhood. You know, this is a Cape house built in the 1950s. And we want to maintain as much as possible that, you know, residential appearance that we have with the rest of the houses in our neighborhood, who are, you know, capes and smaller colonials. So I don't know. I don't know what.
Let me ask, let me ask you this, Mr. Koch. If you could, we've seen the plan that's attached to the, to the application. And then subsequently, there were some drawings or rendering of the house. But why don't you, why don't you describe for us what the addition is, where it's located, and how the proposed addition is going to affect the non-conforming use? As I understand it, in looking at the drawing, it's a, the lot, as you said, is a corner lot. It's in an RA zone. And the minimum lot size in an RA zone is 30,000 square feet. And it appears that your lot has a square footage of 14,731 square feet. Is that correct? Or is that just the back lot, lot, what's described as Lot 22?
Based on my understanding of reading the plot plan, yes. I mean, I would have to agree that our lot seems to have 14,731 square feet.
So at the present time, it's non-conforming.
So Dave, I guess I answered your question. I'm sorry, John.
I didn't hear somebody speak. I said, yeah, that was answering the question. The, the nonconformity that is being, that you're seeking to extend is the, the front setback nonconformity. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so the, in an RA zone district, the front setback is 40 feet. And it appears that nowhere in the front of the house, as it's presently constructed, do you meet that 40-foot setback requirement? Am I, am I looking at that correctly? I see to the, to the right, as you face the house and sort of on Burchill Road, it looks like by the, by the driveway, it's 31.81 feet. And then moving over, I see something that looks like 24.44. And then perhaps 31.20. So why don't you just describe for us where the addition is and how that's going to affect the existing nonconformity?
Sure. So we are looking to put a, come out off the, if you're looking at the house from the street, we're looking to come out off of the left-hand corner, 12 feet, and go 18 feet across. And, you know, that would essentially end up becoming our family room. And we're just trying to put the kitchen off of the dining room, make the house a little bit more functional for my wife and two daughters. Specifically to the distance, what's not being shown is probably the other nine feet of land that's between the, what's, I guess, looks like it's called the edge of pavement and probably that fence line is really what's being shown. So there, there is more frontage. That is, it's planted grass. There is a defined curb. It's not, it's just the way it was when we bought the house. I mean, it's movable. The curb probably comes up six inches. So I guess a standard sidewalk curb. The corner is a good corner in that the house, it would not block any traffic angles. It's a quiet neighborhood. It's something that my wife and I are very comfortable with our kids, even just, you know, riding their bikes up and down. Traffic doesn't move quickly. There's not much traffic through the neighborhood. It's not a cut-through street. So again, coming out 12 feet, it doesn't, doesn't cause any dangerous intersection sightlines, if that's applicable. And again, we're just, we're trying to make the most economical use of the lot that we have.
Stu or Brian, do you have any, any questions of Mr. Koch at this point?
I don't have any questions at this point.
I have a question for the architect. If he's. He's still there?
He just said one second.
Looks like he may have just disappeared.
Did the architect consider other?
Mike, would you like me to put the site plan up?
Sure.
Hey, he asked to unmute himself.
This is Stu Segal.
Can you hear me?
I was trying to ask a question. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I can hear you. Can you hear me? Can you hear you, Stu? Okay. Sorry about that.
Yes.
Yes. So in, in, in selecting this location, did you have other locations or options?
We, well, we did. So back in, I was saying, I don't think you heard me. Back in 2016, we did a renovation of the property that involved a new front portico. We essentially took a screen room-type area and made that into a four-season room. And then we added on a very large deck on the back. And they, after that, they had done some hardscape with a nice stone patio. So if we were to consider going off the back of the house, we would have had to disrupt all of the work that we had done in 2016. So that's why we considered the front for the addition. It also worked out better in terms of the layout of the interior of the house, that it was more appropriate for the family room to be in the front part of the house. We had converted their existing living room to a dining room. So it was just, it was just more appropriate use of the, of the property. It was already a pre-existing non-conforming lot that we knew that we would probably have to go for a variance or a special permit. I'll be honest with you, I was hoping it was going to be a special permit, not a variance. But as it turned out, you know, we, we're now having to apply for the variance.
Is there a basement in this house?
Yes.
Yes, there's a full basement.
And what is in the basement? I can't hear anybody.
Yeah, I've lost, I've lost sound as well.
Yeah. Mr. Koch, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Now I can.
Yes. Okay. Yeah, in the basement, in the basement is the utilities and some washer, dryer, heater, small workbench. And then there's a small, like, office area.
So I was wondering, can you consider that? Did you consider putting the family room in the basement? Yes.
There's just, there's no light. There's just, there's two foot and a half windows on one side. I just.
There's also, there's no value of putting the family room in the basement when it comes to resale value of the house.
I don't understand that.
You don't understand the fact that it's more appropriate to put the addition for a family room on a gray level where there's sunlight and there's usable space and it's conditioned space and it's not, doesn't need to be, be humidified all year long?
There are many houses that have family rooms in their basement?
There are many houses that have family rooms in their basement. The ceiling height isn't even of legal height for a family room in the basement.
Well, I was expecting some, some response like that. But I have to draw it out.
Well, we're working under somewhat difficult circumstances because the audio is broken up. So it's not so easy to hear the questions and not so easy to hear the responses. So unfortunately, we're dealing with those circumstances. But I think we have the answer to that now about the, the ceiling height.
Okay.
Brian, do you have any questions of Mr. Koch or Mr. Chiumini? Stu, I didn't mean to cut you off if you have more questions.
I don't have any questions. Are there any butters or any, are there any butters or any, anybody objecting to this since you put out the public notice?
Not at all. Again, you know, unfortunately, I know no one is here, which I guess I would take as a good sign in my neighborhood. All of my conversations in walking the dog, I know I can specifically, you know, if you'd like to follow up, I know the Brooks family, everybody's just had general conversation. The Brooks have said they are in favor of it. I spoke with another woman, Sharon, and she runs the bakery. I don't know her name, last name of, but, you know, she's been in favor of it. Tyler, across the street, who, you know, owns the Tyler Landscaping. He's been in, you know, it's just been very general, casual, like, good luck. You know, it's gonna be nice to have. I think the one thing this pandemic has taught us is that a 1,500-square-foot house gets smaller really fast, especially with, you know, an eight-year-old and an 11-year-old daughter. They're growing and we're just trying to make functional space. We're trying to, we love the neighborhood. We love the town. You know, economically, we just aren't confident we can make the next jump in the housing market, which is why we really, again, just, we love our neighbors and we want to make it work here, which is, you know, why we applied for the variance.
But that's a great answer to my question. If no one in the neighborhood complains about it.
Emma?
I don't have a problem with it.
Emma, could you take the rendering of the plan of land off the screen? Thank you. Emma, have we, did we receive any submissions for the public in response to the, the published notice commenting one way or the other on the proposal?
No, the planning department has not received any public comment on this project.
John, is, is there a rendering of what the family room will look like when finished?
Well, I don't know if there's a rendering of what's inside of it. I'm not sure that's really relevant to our consideration. There is a, there is a drawing that was attached, not to the application, but there were several subsequent drawings that Emma sent to us when, and it's an attachment, when she sent the agenda items, the agenda out and the attachments, which I think came in on either last Thursday or Friday. And there are some, there are, there's some renderings there, which I think show the, show the addition. I'm not sure. It doesn't really, no. It, it's all sort of molds into the, to the existing, to the existing structure would be how I would characterize it. I did drive by the area last week to get a sense of the, the neighborhood and exactly what the, what the lot looks like. And I think Mr. Koch's statement that the addition wouldn't interfere with traffic sightlines or, or other amenities, shall I say, of the neighborhood is an, is an accurate, is an accurate description. It's a neighborhood that, that actually has sidewalks, unlike the many of our Ashland neighborhoods. And there is a fair amount of, of open space and, and room there. So in that sense, I think the, I'll save the rest of my comments for when we, when we start to discuss the, where we're gonna go, where we want to go with the, the decision on the application. Any other questions from Brian or from you, Stu, at this point?
I'm also.
Somebody say something, but I'm not seeing any lips moving. So I'm not sure. Okay.
I was, I was just saying that if it was helpful, I could actually hold my, I could show you on my computer what the before and after would look like, if that's helpful to you.
Gavin has the ability to show you the, you know, render.
I'll do the best that I can here, given the.
Well, Emma, do you mind sharing your screen?
Maybe you'll co-host, you can share your screen. Mike, is this the rendering you mean? Is this existing?
That's the buffer.
That's, yeah, existing.
Okay, so here's the proposed rights.
Yep. Yes.
P three, okay.
So it's, the addition is going to be, is it two stories?
Uh, yes, it's a family room on the first floor and a bedroom.
Okay. Does anybody else want to look at this any longer?
Emma, could you toggle back to the?
We can remove.
That's the existing view.
And can you go to the proposed view now? Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else want to see? Okay, very good, thank you.
I can put it back up if anyone needs it.
Koch is.
Was there a question? I'm sorry.
Did we lose Stu?
Yeah, I think we lost you.
Well, I was going to ask a question, but I'm, I'm waiting because I don't see, I don't see Stu Siegel.
I. Here. I can hear you.
Okay, yeah, Mr. Koch, is there anything else you'd like to say in support of the, uh, application?
No, I, you know, I guess we just, this is a request that we have, it just, it makes economical sense for us. I think we're trying to just be respectful to the existing conditions of the neighborhood, just that there, this, we just, we want to continue to be, you know, be here, and, and this works for us, given our means.
Okay. Very good. Um, well, if it's, if it's all right with you, Brian, and you, Stu, um, I would like to open the hearing for, uh, public, public comment. Um, I see that we do have one member of the public here. I don't know whether he wishes to, uh, to comment upon the project or not. He's raising his hand as he's an experienced Zoom meeting, uh, participant. Um, I would ask you to identify yourself, and if you do have any questions, to ask them through the chair. Thank you very much, and Mark, the meeting is open for a public comment.
Hey, thank you, Mark LaSoney. I'm just one of the, to the chairman, there are two questions. Is the second floor, would that be in the same, in the frame of the house of the first floor that's there now? That's one question. That's in, in the same frame as the first floor?
Um, question is whether the addition, the second floor and the addition same frame? Um, it appeared to me, and correct me if I'm, if I'm misstating it, but it appeared that the addition was a two, a two-story addition, but that it's level with the existing roof line. With that, is that a fair?
Yes, that's correct. We're not going any higher than the existing house.
Okay.
We're actually meet, meeting the ridge line of the existing house.
Okay.
Hey, thank you.
Mark, did you have a second question?
The response would be, um, for the, I got a second question to the chairman. And, um, the front, the addition that's gonna come out front
Okay.
by the driveway, right, right, right. Is that gonna be taking up much space from the, uh, existing driveway? That would be my other question. Thank you.
There's gonna be no impact on the existing driveway.
Drive way. The addition is on the left side of the house as you face it, and the driveway is on the right side of the house as you face it. And am I correct in that?
Yes.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. Any further comments, Mark? Okay. Um, that being said, um, I don't think, well, as we, as we normally do, um, as we start our discussion, I don't want to close the hearing, uh, in the event that uh, questions come up in our discussion that we may wish to address to the applicant, and as we have done in the past, um, we can start our discussion, uh, and then perhaps uh, close the hearing and enter into deliberations if it feels, if it feels, uh, appropriate. Uh, is that okay with you, Brian, and you, Stu? That's how we're gonna proceed.
For me, Brian.
Yeah, I think that I, I would start off by saying that variance, okay. I think it, um, I start off by saying that variances are, uh, very difficult to, to obtain because the legal standard is, is, is quite, quite high. And I know Mr. Chmene had, had mentioned or commented at one point that he had hoped it would be a special permit as opposed to a variance being required, and I can understand, I can understand that position. It's a much lower standard to meet for a special permit. However, let me start off with just my, my assessment of what, what we're facing with, faced with, and that is that we have a most unusual lot. And not only is the front setback, um, non-conforming, but the size of the lot is non-conforming, and the shape is almost like that of a Fenway Park. Uh, it's a most unusual lot. And one of the issues, or one of the, the grounds that, um, we have to, we can consider determining whether or not to grant a variance, is that we would need to make a finding that owing to circumstances relating to soil conditions, shape, or topography of the land, and that especially affecting such land. Um, it did not appear to me in my purview of the neighborhood, um, that there was a lot that was similar, similar to this lot. It did appear to be fairly unique in its shape, uh, and it almost requires it to be a non-conformity, uh, the front yard setback. This would extend the non-conformity, uh, and come within, it looks like, a little over 20 feet uh, to the sidewalk. Uh, but there's only about 31 feet there already, if I'm reading the plans correctly. It seems to me, uh, that this would be one of those unusual circumstances where the granting of a variance would be appropriate. That's how I'm looking at it at the moment. Uh, Brian and Stu, I welcome your, your thoughts on this.
I also believe that the shape of the lot, uh, lends itself to being very difficult to uh, just put an addition on, uh, without any type of variance. I think the, um, while the new setback will be, um, a greater, uh, what, what's the condition called? I forget the name of it, but, um, it's closer, it's, but I think considering the size of the lot and the shape, um, that it's a worthy. Yeah, I think it's a worthy non-conformity, uh, because of the size and shape of the lot. And I, I don't think that it's too close to the street, uh, it is past the zoning, but the lot is half the size of what's called for in zoning anyway, so it's, um, yeah, I would tend to vote to, um, grant the variance. Over to you, Stu.
Stu, your thoughts on? Stu, your thoughts on the matter?
I concur.
Succinctly said. Uh, okay, I think one of the things that we, we typically do is at this point, we ask our assistant town planner, Emma, to draft a decision uh, which would cover all of the, uh, legal niceties that we have to cover. And we then come back at our next scheduled meeting uh, to review and actually vote on the, uh, decision. So Emma, um, I believe you, you can take from, from our discussion with Brian, Stu, and I said, uh, what our findings would be in this matter. Uh, I think clearly there does not seem to be any detriment to the public good, and we would not substantially, uh, derogate or nullify the intent of the zoning bylaws, uh, by allowing a variance in this request. Uh, and that, um, to draft an appropriate decision and to, uh, distribute it to us prior to the meeting so that we could individually review it, and then come back at the meeting and actually formally, uh, vote, uh, to approve the grant of the variance. Would that be okay?
Yes. Yes, yeah.
It looks like the next meeting would be May 26.
It's, it's very disloyal, I think.
May 26.
May 26, okay.
It'd be a nice anniversary present for Katie and I.
Are you available?
Yes, I'm available.
Well, very good. I'm, I'm glad you didn't tell us that in advance. That might have prejudiced an excited decision. Uh, well, excellent. Congratulations in advance. Okay. Um, then we will, I think we will continue the matter then until May 26, and I would entertain a motion to continue the public hearing to Tuesday, May 26th at 7:00 PM, if someone would like to make that motion.
So moved.
Stu Siegel?
Don't all speak at once.
Don't, so moved.
Is there a second? Okay. Okay, and I heard a second from Stu, and all in favor, aye, and I think we do have to state
Roll call, roll call vote.
Don't we, Emma, because of, roll call, okay. Uh, John Treford and I.
Uh, roll call vote with your name and your vote.
Brian Forrestall, aye.
To continue the matter.
Uh, Stu Siegel would vote aye to continue the matter.
Aye, Brian Forrestall, aye to continue the matter.
We are, we are. And I think I already did, but I, John Treford, the vote to continue the matter. Uh, I believe we are all set then for the hearing. The, uh, as I said, we will come back on May 26th, review the draft hearing decision. Um, it hopefully will be in final shape at that night. We will. But Emma, we don't physically sign these. I believe the, the governors, the legislation that was passed allows for electronic signatures in these instances. How does, how does that work now?
Um, I believe electronic signatures are an option. Um, another option is for the board to undertake a second vote at the next meeting to allow, um, you know, one person like the chair to sign the decision. Um, and at that point, uh, John, you and I could arrange kind of a drop-off, um, to get your signature. So, um, maybe next meeting, I'll be prepared to talk about our options, and, uh, you guys can decide how you want to proceed with that.
Fair enough. Okay, that then concludes the, um, tonight's, uh, tonight's hearing. So thank you very much, Mr. and Mrs. Koch, thank you. Mr. Chmene, thank you very much. Uh, and the board still has, uh, some additional business to conduct, so we will continue onward. You're welcome to continue and stay on, but frankly, it's just approval of minutes. It's not the most exciting thing in the world, so do not be offended if you decide to go on about other business this evening.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're, you're welcome. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes for our April 14th, 2020, uh, Zoom video conference meeting. Emma sent a draft, uh, last week for each of us to review. Um, I have no proposed changes. It looked fine to me. Brian or Stu, do you have any proposed changes?
None here.
Hi, Brian, don't have any proposed changes.
If not, then okay, uh, how, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes for our April 14th. Okay, how, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes for our April 14th, 2020 meeting. Does someone wish to make that motion?
So moved.
Stu Siegel, so moved.
Okay, and so one move and there's a second someplace. I, John Trefeth, say vote I to approve the minutes.
Brian Forrestall, I vote I.
Sorry, Brian. I, Stu Siegel, vote I also.
Okay, that concludes that. Any items, staff updates or administrative matters, Emma?
We have received a new application for a special permit from 304, 306 Union. And so they will be appearing at the first June meeting on June 9. And I will distribute those materials closer to the meeting.
Okay. Okay. The. There seems to have been tonight a significant delay or disruption in the video screen and the, the audio. I mean, I participated in a number of, of Zoom meetings. In recent weeks, and I haven't, haven't seen that. I mean, I can see people's lips moving and their voices are there. But tonight, I'm not getting that. When I, when I look at you, Emma, your lips aren't moving. And then all of a sudden, I, I hear your voice, and it's the same with Stu and the same with Brian, so. And with Mark as well, when he was, was speaking during the public comment period. It makes it very hard, at least for me, to. Follow what's, what's being. What's being done. I don't know if there's something we can do about it. If it just happens to be tonight. I'm not sure, but it's, it's a significant, it's a significant problem.
Yeah, I've been seeing similar delays tonight, and I've been thinking it's my internet connection. Am I back? Can you hear me now?
Okay. Okay.
I'll look into it.
I can hear you fine now, yeah.
Oh, okay. I thought it might be my internet connection, but I'll look into whether it might be something larger.
Looks like Mark has a question.
Mark, I, I see that you're raising your hand. We don't really have a public comment period scheduled on the agenda, but if it's all right with Brian and Stu. Go ahead, and if, if I feel that it's, it's, we might be in conflict with the open meeting law. I'll have to, I'll have to shut things down, but. Why don't you tell us what you want to tell us?
Hey, Mark LaSoney. About the typical things you're asking about. Do, Emma, the delay is not her way. It's. I always say it's a system-wide, seven, 10-second delay that it's like buffers itself and then comes back. That's why you see things freeze like that. So, Amber, her is her. It's a system-wide server buffer delay and it comes back. That's what that is. Thank you.
Okay, so thank you. Very good. But if there's no further business, does someone wish to make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I move we adjourn the meeting.
Stu?
I think that.
Okay, all in favor? I, John Trefeth, in favor of adjourning the meeting.
I, Brian Forrestall, in favor of adjoining.
I, Stu Siegel, in favor of adjourning.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Waka. Good evening, everybody.
Yeah, nice to see everybody. Take care, stay safe.
Good night.